It's a tour at the time and places advertised. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand and join us in reciting our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, counsel, and welcome, members of the public, to tonight's meeting. I want to make sure that Counselor Forstman, you can hear us loud and clear, and Kristi Stoll, can you hear us both? Thumbs up, perfect, okay. All right, our next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for individuals wishing to comment on agenda items or other matters they wish to bring to the council's attention, excluding those that are scheduled for a public hearing. As there may not be another opportunity to comment once the agenda item is addressed, individuals are encouraged to speak at this time. Individuals are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, commentary is limited to three minutes. You'll see me look down periodically to my phone. That's what I'm doing, is keeping the clock on this, and so I try to keep you as close to three minutes as I can. If you'd like to offer citizen comments tonight, we have a microphone in the middle of the floor. All we need is your name and city of residence. We don't need your physical address. So if you'd like to offer comments, the microphone will be available for that. So I will open it up to citizen comments, and if you have any comments to share with us tonight, please use the microphone, introduce yourself, and then you'll have the floor.
Good evening, City Council Mayor. This is my first time speaking to you. This is my first time speaking at one of these events. I'd like to address the City Council on the thought of increasing taxes and fees to the citizens of this community. The citizens can't afford this anymore. The city has a spending problem. There's people in our community that are getting by. They can't afford anymore. They're on fixed incomes. There's families that are going without. It's got to stop. We got to find a way to fund these problems with the city in a different direction. Can't do it no more. Their pockets are empty. By the time they leave their jobs with what paycheck they have left after the federal taxes and all those taxes, by the time the end of the month rolls around, they got to make a decision whether to pay the bills or pay you. We got to find a better solution than just raising fees and raising taxes. We also need to address Brighton Canyon. I don't know why that hasn't been approached yet and why that's not in the city limits or CCI. I would like to speak with someone about that after the meeting as to why that has never happened and never occurred. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, we did not get the individual's name or city of residence that just testified.
John, Liston, Idaho. Thank you, John. Thank you, Jennifer. Right here. Are there further citizen comments? Here, just a couple seconds. I have, people tell me that all the time, and I feel like I'm yelling, and I apologize.
They can't hear me either. They're stating that they really can't hear you.
I will try to, I will try to yell more. I appreciate that. Thank you. And you'll have to let us know if it's just me. If it is, then I will work to correct that, but...
Mayor, if you could please repeat your last comments after the individual provided their public comment relating to the soon closure of public comment time? I believe the individuals were stating they could not hear you when you were asking for additional public comments.
So we're taking additional citizen comment at this time, and, yeah.
I'm one of the hearing impaired, so please forgive me. Are you going to be taking comments regarding your budget separately from the public comments that are being accepted now?
No, ma'am. You need to offer those to us right now.
Okay. And please bear with me.
Yeah, and we need your name and city of residence.
Margaret McVicker, Seventeenth, Twenty-Fifteenth Avenue. I'm gonna go a little off base here for just a minute, so please bear with me. I have a concern because the city is always saying that they don't have money, and they don't have, the revenues that they're generating are not enough to sustain what their bills are and offset their expenses. So I would like to just present something here that, that I have, I have an agreement here that's passed due for an entertainment entity. No person or organization can do anything about it because no one can say they're harmed more than someone else. So nobody can address that as a, as a citizen, but you folks as a city can, so I'd like to bring this to your attention. There's a, there's an issue that I did discuss with Mayor Johnson that I felt was a money issue that was being passed by by the city, and it's so old that probably only I know about it because I'm older than Moses, but all of you folks are kind of new to the, to the podium. But what I'd like to address to you tonight is the fact that in 1999, there was an agreement made for a sewer line to be extended out to an entertainment entity. The agreement stated that the entertainment entity would be paying for sewer services, and that included the sewer services. It included a, a maintenance and operation fund set up so that when our wastewater treatment plant came on to needing repairs, that it would, it would be addressed by part of that payment. It came on to the fact that, anyway, what happened, what happened was that a sewer permit was, was given, a certain amount of gallonage was sent to, or estimated for the, for the project, and what happened was the entertainment entity needed access to a sewer in order to build a hotel. And that agreement process provided 152-room hotel, enlarged casino, permanent events center, and all that flow went to our wastewater treatment plant. Once the improvements were there, the extra gallonage from it, which caught, was, was a lot, caused our wastewater treatment plant to be over, overtaxed with the effluent that was caused. And currently, all of our residents now are paying off the wastewater treatment plant rebuilding bond from their money and taxes, but the, but the entertainment entity is not paying anything, and it's located in the county, so it's not covered by any bond issues that they would be paying in any taxes. Now we're, now we're being told that our water sewer trash fees are going to be raising. A lot of the financing that's going on is going to be for the wastewater treatment issues, expense of $3.2 million in the wastewater budget. We're talking about another bond being passed in November for water issues. The one thing for the, for the financial part of it was the 162,700 update to wastewater master plan. I would appreciate if that would be delayed until later because what I'm talking about is an agreement that was signed when this sewer line went in and was put in, and the agreement has not been honored by, by the entertainment entity paying any of the fees. No buy-in fees, which were almost $40,000, no monthly billing fees because they haven't been built by the city, no...
Hey, I need to ask you...
The maintenance, the maintenance and operation account never existed, but it was supposed to exist to help with our, with our treatment plant.
Could you wrap up your comments, please?
A big...
Could you wrap up your comments, please? We're over our three minutes.
I'm sorry.
I need you to, I, I need you to wrap up your comments, please.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I will. So actually, Mayor Johnson, what I'm asking you to do for this issue, I, I have a copy of the agreement. I'd like to leave with you folks. And I'd like for you to take this on to call for an audit of the books on this issue of the sewer line because it's not old news. This is still going on as a, as a free city service to the entertainment entity. I'd like to have you look forward to and obtain an enforceable agreement, not just the city and the entity people, but having knowledgeable attorneys that are dealing with constructing tribal contracts to make sure that the tribe starts paying for their water, their sewer processing fees and their maintenance account and stuff that was called for in the original contract. And if, if this can't happen, I would suggest, and this, this is the only thing a regular client would be doing, is if that can't be accomplished, then I would ask that the, the sewer service be ceased to that entertainment entity with notice.
Okay, thank you.
But they can be seized at the truck stop until, until the city fees and monies are due and there's an assignment in place. But what I'd like to also say is that your maintenance, your wastewater treatment maintenance plan, you cannot, you cannot revise it without knowing the effluent gallonage input from this major contributor.
Okay, thank you. Could you please submit your comments, your paperwork over to the city clerk? Ma'am? Can you give them to Tanya over there? No, to, to, right? Oh, she's right. She's right behind you. She's right back there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further citizen comments tonight?
Thank you. I, I appreciate that, and I hope that this, if you look into it, will generate more, more funding for our budget.
Additional citizen comments tonight? Okay, I don't...
Yes, sir.
Welcome. Please just state your name and city of residence.
My name is, my name is Everdale Everett. I live at 902 Grail Drive in Lewiston. First of all, I want to thank John Appier and Jim for responding to my request for information regarding a drug and alcohol house on Grail Drive. And to begin with, we're all governed by rules, regulations, guidelines, et cetera, which makes us unique. This is a single-family owner occupied family dwelling which is being used as an alcohol and drug rehab center where the residents are not supervised at all, except for like from nine in the morning until five in the afternoon. In the nighttime, there's no supervision. We do not know who these people are or where they're from. Have they been vetted? Are they there at their own discretion? Are they court mandated to be there? Do any of these folks have felony records? Are they being counseled? Have they received therapy? And how are they being transported? There is only a two-car garage. Where do they park? So many red flags are flying. The reaction I received when confronting the man in the yard was Nazi Germany discriminated against the Jews, discriminating against we, discriminating against the blacks and slavery, the Asians, the LBG community. And would I be against a black family moving into the neighborhood or a Jewish family? We're here to talk about taxes essentially. But when you have a rehab house with alcoholics, alcoholics and drug abusers in your neighborhood, the values of your houses will go down. That puts a big dent in the tax revenue that goes to the city. So that's what I'm here for, is to find out all the legalities of this unbeknown house that's on Grail Drive. It's kind of like underhanded, you know? There's a lot of, they don't want to talk to you about nothing. You know, they, they highly insinuate that we're prejudiced and discriminating, discriminating against people that want to make their lives better. We're not against that. We're all for that. And we're not against religion or discrimination. None of us are bigoted or prejudiced. You know, we've lived there over seven years, and I cannot tell you the religious beliefs of anybody on that street on both sides. None. It doesn't matter.
Everett, can I ask you to wrap up your comments, please?
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Further citizen comments?
Hi, my name is Becky Colley. I'm from Lewiston, Idaho. I live on Grail Drive as well. I, it was my understanding there'd be, can you hear me?
Maybe turn, there you go.
Becky Colley, Lewiston, Idaho. I'm a realtor in town, and I agree with this gentleman that I've spoke to a lot of people. They're having a hard time. I know tonight is about taxes, and I have the same opinion as him. Inflation is going up. Groceries are going up. We've already had some tax hikes. I don't have any statistics, but the taxes in Lewiston are higher than a lot of cities in Idaho, and I think that's because we've had recent tax hikes. I don't have the details, but I can gather them up pretty easy. A question on taxes that I also have is there are different multipliers in different parts of the city, but what's government is used by everyone. So Grail Drive is a high-tax area. I don't understand different, like a puzzle. It's hard to tell people when you're showing them houses, and they look in your neighborhood and they go, wow! So there's other places than Grail Drive that have higher taxes than other places in town. So that's always been a question of mine. And how do you fight that? What's the process to talk to someone to get your taxes down? And then this gentleman who spoke about Grail Drive, I did some research, and the reasonable accommodation. You guys have all been very kind and nice and accommodating to give us information, and basically what I heard is that you're trumped by federal and state laws. I understand that. So some of the research I found was that a single-family residence can be designated under the reasonable accommodation clause. That's how a lot of group homes get into residential areas. And every city has a different number. I don't have the number in front of me, but there's a Lewiston ordinance that said the number for Lewiston is eight. I know some of you have already admitted that 16 people are going into the home on Grail Drive. And we spoke to the owner, one of the neighbors did, and he said that there's no staff there in the nighttime. That's concerning. I've talked to some neighbors. There's a lot of single women, a lot of single men, a lot of elderly, a lot of disabled people that are just residents in our area. So we're, we're all alarmed. We're also alarmed that there's no public announcement to anyone. We found out because a good neighbor was helping the new owner move in. And so it all, on Thursday afternoon, was the first time we knew what was going in in our neighborhood. So I understand the position you have. Your hands are tied, but we need some help in this. We need to know what the rules are, and we want to know our protection for safety, for fire, for traffic. Already, there's been a lady out on the porch smoking. There's 11 acres of bare land. If that catches on fire, there's a residency there, a big beautiful one, probably worth a million bucks. So we have some concerns that are real, and we'd like some help with what's the best way to handle this with no discrimination. So thank you for your time.
Additional citizen comments tonight? Okay, I'll close the citizen comments, but we, we heard you, and we're going to review that, so the concerns that you have and what's going on. We appreciate you being here tonight, everybody, and providing feedback, citizen comments, it's very important to us. So we do take it serious. Great hearing from you. So Everett, would you go to the microphone, please?
Yeah, I, I got a question for Mr. Johnson. Talking to the individual in the lawn that was working on the sprinkler system, your name was brought up, and he told me that you had signed off on this.
That's not a true statement, so, but we can get your documents and get you more information.
And also, when we were out there one day, the fire marshal shows up and we're talking. He drives down there to, you know, talk, and he was denied entry.
Yes.
So what does that tell you?
Well, I don't know. As you know, I was in the neighborhood last night visiting with citizens that asked to meet with me, so we talked about that, and I just have to do my homework.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, though. Okay, council, next we'll move to the active agenda, Roman numeral four. First item, A, ordinances, first reading, number one, item one A, ordinance 4955, considering ordering a special bond election to be held on the question of the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city in an amount not to exceed $22,540,000 for the purpose of constructing improvements to wastewater, water, stormwater, and road infrastructure and related improvements and costs, establishing the date and time of the special bond election, approving a form of ballot, providing for registration of voters, and providing for related matters. This is an action item. We have our public works director with us here tonight, Director Don Johnson. And I just want to say at any time, Counselor Forstman and Christine, if you can't hear anything, just wave at us and catch our attention so we can make sure that's all working up there. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Director Johnson. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. I'm going to just kind of go back in time a little bit and give you the history lesson of how we got to today. So as I'm sure most everybody in here is aware, there was a bond election in May for $25 million for all those improvements the mayor just spoke about, stormwater, water, wastewater, transportation improvements on the downtown corridor, bundled many different utilities in surface transportation and opportunities to address some of the deficient infrastructure that primarily obviously serves the downtown, but their main trunk lines that serve all of Lewiston as far as sewer and even portions of water. That bond was not successful in its need to reach 66 or supermajority of a vote. We were short, I think, 152, 154 votes. So the city went out and did a public survey, reached out, I think we got close, I think it was about 450 comments back, just short of 500, and the information was valuable. It, it gave us critiques of what we did wrong and why people didn't vote for it, why people did vote for it, and kind of parsed through all the data, and we presented that to the City Council. I think that was the August work session, and the council was, council directed me to come back and put it back on the November ballot. So that is why we're here. This is the first reading tonight. If this passes the first reading, next week we'll come back for the second and third reading, and it will go on the November election. It has got the same filing deadline as any city... the November election, it has got the same filing deadline as any city or mayor council, or city council or mayor candidate, so that's the end of this month, closing business day next Friday, so we'll, if, if it passes tonight, and then next Monday, we'll take it over to the county, and they will put it on the ballot for next November. So that's the, kind of the background on it, what's different from this last election, the last bond was twenty-five million, broken down into the estimates for transportation and, and all the entities that we talked about, I'm not going to go in, I've got a whole song and dance, about forty minutes of how, how it's funded, the benefits of addressing these infrastructure deficiencies, but I'll save that for whether you decide to put it on the ballot or not, what is primarily different on this is, as this played out during the election, we had a lot of conversations with Idaho Department of Transportation, and they started taking a greater interest in, in the project, and for those who may not be aware, ITD, Idaho Department of Transportation, their right-of-way is separate from the city, so they maintain it, they maintain coming into town off ninety-five, across Memorial Bridge, that's all of theirs, then it goes down the bypass and behind where we're at here, then it comes off the bypass, and so the section of D Street that comes into downtown, loops behind the Lewis and Clark Hotel, and then on the Blue Bridge, so it connects all the main bridges in the valley here, that's ITD right-of-way, so they have jurisdiction on that, so they were more than happy to let the city go through that, that project and pay for it, as we started working with them, greater, we found they don't have much affinity for roundabouts, and so they, they wanted to start offering some critiques and financial assistance, and so that's where we're at today, that we pulled out that portion of the right-of-way from this bond, and so you're seeing it went from twenty-five million dollars to twenty, whatever that was, twenty-two-five, I think is what the final number was, twenty-two-five-four, and so I cannot stand here today and tell you a hundred percent certainty that there are no roundabouts, but ITD is working on putting through the models and that are designed to meet all of their standards, the cost is relatively awash, and since ITD is picking up the cost difference, they will handle all the surface transportation for the area, surface transportation costs within their right-of-way, so that lowers our bond cost and, and gives us a little bit more certainty on the project, so I think that's about all I have for today, but I'm here for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Director, councilors, Councilor Wright?
Yeah, I'll just add, so, to, to give a little bit of context, but Dustin was saying not to go all the way back through everything, what, what we're trying to do is dig up the road once, and dig up the road, fix the water pipes, and fix the nearly hundred-year-old sewer pipes at the same time, otherwise, we dig up the road, fix the water pipes, we fix the road, costs us millions of dollars anyway, then we dig up the road again, because we got to fix the sewer pipes, and then it costs us a million dollars again, millions of dollars to do the road again, so this, this one is a, a no-brainer for, for me, that we just put in the extra money, and we save a lot of money down the road. The, the other piece that I wanted to bring up with this is, you know, it's not about roundabouts at all, that's, I think it's completely separated from that, and a, as far as, you know, it was on the ballot already, why are we going to put it on the ballot again, we already said, no, it's, the, the turnout was very low in May, and we still had over sixty percent of people voting for it, I think it would be fair for the community to be in a higher turnout, where we're getting closer to that thirty-plus percent of the population making the decision, and that's, that's why I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, councillor, other councillor, councillor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor, actually I have a question for the councillor Gordon, or Director Gordon?
Director Gordon, welcome.
Hi, Amy Gordon, City Treasurer.
Thank you, Director, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we get a lot of questions of why, when the citizens look at our balance sheet, the city has a lot of reserves, and the question comes up is why don't we use our reserves to pay for this, this bill, I guess in a short answer, is there, can you give an explanation why we don't use those?
The city, we look at reserves at a fund-by-fund level, so like, water has money in reserves that's intended to be used for water purposes only, we don't transfer those funds to another fund, so likewise, capital transportation has its own reserves, water, wastewater, and stormwater, so for this particular project, they would each lean on their reserves to cash fund a portion of the project, and then use a bond for the remaining project cost. Each of those enterprise funds, water and wastewater, they do have an annual pipeline replacement budget, so within their annual budget, they can go out and replace so many lines of water, sewer lines a year, and then that then provides them the mechanism to fund their portion of the, the bond, so they would use some reserves to put into the project upfront, they would utilize a portion of the bond, and then from there, repay that bond with their annual pipeline replacement, and it's similar to capital transportation, they've been trying to accumulate money into reserves so that they can do larger projects, but as you can imagine, a twenty-million-dollar project is hard to do, and so they would use a portion of those reserves to go down into the project, and then the bond for the remainder, and then rather than using their property tax allocation to then build up their reserves each year, it would go towards paying back the, the bond.
Thank you.
Very similar to a mortgage, you have the money to make the payment for the debt, we don't have the money to buy the house up front. I'm sorry, I, Christine Stoll from the Clearwater Financial Group is here online, if you have any questions on the language that's to the ordinance.
Councillor Spicklemeyer? You're good?
Okay, Director Johnson, you mentioned Christine Stoll, Clearwater Financial, Christie, do you have a short comment or two you can share with the public here and with the council that would benefit this discussion?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and, and appreciate your time, so I wanted to say that I just want to be counsel of the, the purpose of the bond is really one time, by doing this one time, you are able to save quite a bit of money, and you're able to get your project done fully. By, by initiating the bond, you're able to borrow at a much lower rate than the market, and also...
You have to move back from your microphone or change it or something, because there's a little bit of an echo and a cutout.
Is it?
Let's try and...
Is that any better? All right, is that any better?
So far, it's better.
Okay, make sure you follow me up, wait a minute, okay.
Okay, Christie, I have to ask you to wait for one second, I was notified we may have lost councillor Forstman, and unless she purposely dropped off, let's just see if she checks back in there, so, there we go.
No, I didn't drop off.
Okay, all right, here we go, Christie, you have the floor, thank you, Christie.
Okay, I do apologize, because I can hear echo, so if it's echoing for y'all, I'm not sure how to solve that, but what I would want to reiterate is that when you have your bond, you're able to borrow at a lower rate, that'll allow you to complete your contract one time, rather than waiting for potential loans that would maybe not come through and make the timeline a lot longer. Additionally, your enterprise funds, as Director, as Amy has just indicated, that your enterprise funds are, you have enough in those funds to repay the payment without raising your levies, as well as, without facing any taxes, so basically, the, what folks are already paying is more than adequate to pay the bond.
Councilors, questions for the comments, questions, okay, Director, oh, councillor Wright?
Thank you, and, and this might be somewhat Jennifer question, potentially, we'll, we'll see, but I know in, when there's one of the, what are they called those, opposition on, on a ballot, there's a, like a for and against type section, is that something that can be written along with this on the ballot, or is that outside the, just to give more context, if someone hasn't read, why I ask is because that was one of the main pieces of feedback from the surveys of, I wasn't aware, I don't fully understand why.
Mayor, thank you councillor Wright, Jennifer Tengano, City Attorney, so in the proposed ordinance, there is a section at the end of the ballot language that says, in favor of issuing bonds in amount not to exceed twenty-two million five hundred forty thousand dollars, and then there's space for a check mark, and then against issuing bonds in the amount not to exceed twenty-two million five hundred forty thousand dollars, and then a spot for a check mark, so when this goes on the ballot, it will go exactly as presented in section four of this proposed ordinance.
And I guess, sort of what I'm asking is, in any, I, I don't know if this is making sense, but when you see propositions on a ballot, there's, it's almost like a leaflet that goes along with it, that says, here's reasons in favor you should think about, here's pros and cons almost to go with it, and I don't necessarily mean the wording here needs changed, I just, I was curious if that's even a, an option.
So I'm going to preface this answer with, I am the city's lawyer, I am not authorized to give legal advice generally, however, my response will be generally speaking about Idaho law, and so it's just general advice for public consumption and not legal advice, so generally speaking, public entities are not authorized to use public money to advocate for or against a particular ballot measure, or something that is to be elected upon, however, it can provide informational materials that generally detail what the proposal is, it just can't advocate for or against it, and so my understanding is that, as was done previously, the city does provide informational materials related to the proposed bond ordinance, but it does not advocate one way or another to say that you should or should not vote for it.
Thank you, just one follow-up, are, are those informational materials available at the, I guess, the election, the, the, from the term, is place where you vote?
That question, I'm not aware, but typically, you can't picket or, or advocate within, I think it's a thousand feet of a polling place, so there are general limitations about what information is given to people at the actual place of polling, Dustin would know better about what the city's informational distribution plan is going to be, and then what it was previously, and I believe Christine Stoll would also be able to have some information about what the city did in the last round, as far as educating the public, and what efforts there might be planned for public education for the next round, were it to be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, Christie, I'm going to give you one more chance, is there anything you would like to add in terms of the language that might answer councillor Wright's question?
Councillor Wright, I, I appreciate the question, and to your point, we did do education last election round, where we had many different materials that were available for public consumption, educational materials, those were flyers, they were open houses that the city staff held, there were some ads, et cetera, there was a website that was also created where folks could go and find out more information, so there was about a three-month campaign of education, to your point, in the election survey, there were quite a few people that had indicated that they just weren't aware, that there was something on the ballot where they didn't quite understand, and so we would be working with the city again to use those same materials, updating a little bit, to make sure that people are more educated, and trying to reach folks, that they can ask questions and become more educated on the topics, they can feel informed about, regarding if we are able to have the materials at the polling places, I would have to look into that, I don't think that that is something, as your attorney just indicated, that is allowed by Idaho law, but I certainly would like to look into that a little bit more and talk to our bond authority, how about that? And, but I would say that I think we're all in agreement that more education and reaching more people will be important.
Thank you, Christie, Director Johnson, any parting comments?
I don't think so.
Thank you, Director, councilors, you have before you, ordinance forty-nine fifty-five, councillor Schroder?
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number forty-nine fifty-five by title only.
Second. Been moved by councillor Schroder, second by council president Kleber to approve the first reading of ordinance number forty-nine fifty-five by title only, is there further discussion or amendments? And those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Question carries, clerk Rocky?
Approving the first reading of ordinance forty-nine fifty-five, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, Nez Perce County, Idaho, ordering a special bond election to be held on the question of the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city in an amount not to exceed twenty-two million five hundred forty thousand dollars for the purpose of constructing improvements to wastewater, water, stormwater, and road infrastructure and related improvements and costs, establishing the date and time of the special bond election, approving a form of ballot, providing for registration of voters, providing for related matters, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, clerk Rocky, councilors, we are on the active agenda under ordinances, item A, we're going to move to second readings, number two, A, ordinance forty-nine fifty-two, considering amending ordinance forty-nine twenty-three, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty-twenty-four, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-five, appropriating additional monies that are to be received in the sum of eleven million one hundred three thousand two hundred twenty dollars, this is an action item. Councillor Schroder?
I move to approve the second reading of ordinance number forty-nine fifty-two.
Second. Been moved by councillor Schroder, second by council president Kleber to approve the second reading of ordinance number forty-nine fifty-two, is there discussion or amendments? Councillor... Counselor Wright?
Discussion, discussion quickly. So since we have folks here that may not have heard the first reading and got a full explanation of what this is. So there are funds that are proposed to be spent or approved to be spent in a budget. And then they aren't, so they have to be moved from one year to the next year. Just the finance director, I'm sure could give a far superior explanation, but it's not approving additional spending that we're doing right now.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. Further comments? If not, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Counselor Forstman, how do you vote?
Apologies. Aye.
Thank you. Clerk Brockie?
Approving the second reading of ordinance 4952, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending ordinance number 4923, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, appropriating additional monies that are to be received by the city of Lewiston, Idaho in the sum of $11,103,220 and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Brockie. Counselors, we'll now move to 2B ordinance 4950 to be termed the 2026 Annual Appropriation Ordinance, considering appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the city of Lewiston for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2025 and ending September 30, 2026. This is an action item. And again, we do have our finance director here, Amy Gordon. Have questions for her? Otherwise, counsel, I would approve or entertain a motion. Counselor Specklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment to it, and I just some information around it. I think that-
Counselor, we need a motion in a second to approve the second reading before we can discuss it or propose amendments. Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve the second reading of ordinance number 4950.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Wright, to approve the second reading of ordinance number 4950. Counselor Specklemeyer?
Thank you. For the city, I think one of our biggest things is to help improve our economic growth. And right now, we have a service contract with Valley Vision. I think in the last year, they've done a great job. This year, they have a lot of new, help with some prospects out there. I know it costs them a lot of money in their research, promotion, and all the travel they have to do it. Instead of us sitting around waiting for somebody to knock on our door, I think Jerry Chavez is out there knocking on doors for us. So I'd like to make a motion to increase Valley Vision's service contract from $40,000 to $50,000 and fund the $10,000 increase with the city council's contingency fund.
Second.
Okay, counselors, I will repeat the motion, or the amendment, pardon me. The amendment is by Counselor Specklemeyer, second by Counselor Wright, to increase the funding for Valley Vision from the $40,000 that is identified under service contracts in the budget and pay for that additional $10,000 through the contingency fund. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Jennifer Tingano, City Attorney, I just have a question about this to clarify. Is it the current service contract that you're speaking of or a future contract that's not yet entered into?
I can hear very well. Counselor Specklemeyer, the question is, is this for the current year or is this for next year?
FY '26.
Thank you.
Counselor, so just to put a little meat on the bones here, the current budget it shows $80,000 for our service contracts, and it identifies three service providers. And in that budget, it identifies Valley Vision at $40,000. Counselor Specklemeyer is signaling his intentions to you to use $10,000 out of your contingency funds, which you do have every year, as part of the budget. So that when we take up the service contracts in September, October, a request is most likely to be made for the full $50,000. And at that time, you will vote on whether or not to fund that contract. And if so, it will be funded with this amendment through the service contract funds, which come out of reserves, and $10,000, which comes out of your contingency funds. Is there further discussion on the amendment? Counselor Forstman, can you hear everything? And okay, thank you. So I'm going to ask for a voice vote on this. And if there are any other additional amendments after this, counselors, you're certainly welcome to make those. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Are there any further amendments? Counsel President Kleber?
Just nothing against Valley Vision at all. $40,000 is a lot of money, and we've been supporting them to $240,000 for many, many years. And we're the only ones in the valley carrying the load. Clarkson gives them $30,000. Five. Jerry's shaking his head. It's not much. Nez Perce County, I don't know whether contributing or not. It just seems odd to me that we're the only ones supporting it. I do have an amendment that I would like to make, but I'll need some questions answered, probably from Director Gordon concerning reduction of, it would be capital for the transportation from fleet.
Counselors, let me make sure that Director Gordon and our city clerk and city attorney understand the amendment that we just passed. Are there any questions on that?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, Director. Director Gordon, please.
Hi, Amy Gordon, City Treasurer.
Hi. So I noticed in our fleet, vehicle replacements includes four patrol SUVs, two street sweepers, and one trim mower. I have a problem with the trim mower. I'm wondering, why are we in a position where we need two street sweepers instead of one? Thank you.
So the, both of these street sweepers were due for replacement in prior years. The scheduled to replace our sweepers between 3,500 and 4,000 hours. Sweeper number 463, one of those that's past replacement, has 6,785 hours on it and sweep probably more now. And then sweeper 470, which is also due for replacement, has 5,800 hours on it. We have our sweepers on a 10-year life cycle, and both of these are beyond that time. The amount that is in the budget is, we believe, is a high estimate. If you recall, we replaced a sweeper a few years ago. We put in the order, then we had to wait two years to receive it. We wrote the check earlier this spring. And when we placed that sweeper, one of the reasons we had to delay it was due to the increased cost in it. So we've delayed these sweepers to set aside some additional replacement funds. And we have it in there at what we believe is a fair estimate of what that will cost next year.
Okay. The patrol SUVs, mileage?
Yes. We have patrol SUVs are on a five-year replacement. These were, these are all 2020s. And so we'd be replacing them actually at six years.
Because they're worn out, or?
Yeah, it's the mileage and kind of where we, the replacement lives are set on about the time that we start having issues with the patrol vehicles. In fact, two of these have had pretty serious mechanical failures. Didn't we have a transmission issue on one of these? Yeah, the number of, it's not just miles driven, but they do, you probably have seen our police vehicles throughout town. They'll run, they'll idle while they're responding to a call. They don't shut down because they're operating all that equipment that's installed into those vehicles. So their radios, their MDCs, their computers they have in there to keep those up and powered, their body cam and dash cams, they have to keep those vehicles running. So when they're on shift, their vehicle is running the entire shift.
Council President Kleber?
Okay. And I guess this would be a question more for the chief in regards to three new officers for next year. I guess this is one, I've been struggling with this a little bit, trying to save some money in case we decide to change a little bit of our administration at the city hall level. Can you get by with two officers next year?
I can kind of get by with whatever counsel approves. It's just, you know, long-term, based on what I think our long-term vision and needs are going to be, and based on the audit, it's just going to take longer to get to that finish line then. Yes, I mean, to answer your question, yes, two's better than zero.
I understand. Okay. So what was the amendment that, yeah, I still struggle with this, you know, four blood vehicles all at one shot.
Well, these aren't additional vehicles, you either understand. These are just replacement vehicles that were shit already factored in.
What's that?
The vehicles aren't like brand-new vehicles.
Well, I get that.
We're adding to the fleet. We're just replacing what needs to be replaced in the fleet.
I understand completely. I guess my amendment would be to approve two new officers and three patrol cars. And I'll leave the street sweepers alone, I guess. That's in form of a motion.
Council President Kleber?
Apparently that's going to die.
I'm going to wait for a second and give the counselors a second to think about it, but it appears that that motion dies for lack of a second. Are there further amendments? Counselor Wright?
Yeah, I just, I have just some questions overall in the, in the police category here because I do see a fairly large increase. So I see in the field operations category, $428,350. And can you summarize what, what is that? What's all in that increase?
Well, that would be the officers, yes.
The officers. Okay. And then the three new officers is the $428,000 change, and then support services, $184,410.
So let me just back up. The $400,000 increase in field operations, that includes the three officers, but in each personnel line item throughout the budget, you're going to see likely, not everyone has one, but an increase that covers the cost of living adjustments, the increase to health insurance, and then the adjustments for the Percy rates. The also included in there is workers' compensation. The field operations does have a larger than what you would estimate it to be based off those items I just identified because of the three additional officers. So when you look to support systems, that is driven by the payroll factors that I just mentioned.
Gotcha. And, and what is, what are the current levels with police officers that we're trying to get to? What's the state we're in right now? Because I'm just trying to think, think through, like, you know, we have, we have 20, we should have 40. Like, what kind of a situation are we in?
Well, I mean, ideally, what I'm looking to get the agency on is long-term. I'd like to add-
Can I stop you for one second? I just want to make sure that Counselor Forstman can hear everything that's being said. Yes? Okay, thank you. She's got young ears. Go ahead, chief. Thank you.
So long-term, what we, the ultimate goal is going to be is to hire 11 new officers, eliminate the corporal ranks, and then add three lieutenants. And then that will enable a much larger restructuring of the entire department. Currently, with our numbers, Idaho sits, or sorry, Lewiston sits at about 1.3 officers per thousand. The national average for cities our size is 1.71. So getting the 11 over time will eventually at least get us to an average of what it is national. That, and I said, there'll be a large reorganization, but it's just, just to get our agency up to what the average is nationwide for cities our size. We're obviously way behind in that capacity. So. And then if you just go to an overall just national average, take out city size, the national average is about 2.1 officers per thousand.
Gotcha. And, and sorry, I'm putting you on the spot here. Do we have a challenge right now with overtime because of understaffing?
Officers obviously will help decrease that. And you're also talking, when you talk about overtime, and sometimes it's, it's getting a little better, but for like the last first six months, there's a tremendous amount of burnout, there's frustration. I even hear the officers talk about the amount of overtime. I've got less and less officers, I've got less and less dispatchers wanting to work overtime because they're already all burned out. You know, I had a dispatcher that had to drive her daughter to Pullman a couple weeks ago. We were, we were so stretched thin that she had to reach a drive back from Pullman to cover a 12-hour shift, you know? I've got officers just doing things like that, taking away from their family, their time, their decompression time. So again, overall, the division, when you start adding more officers, you start decreasing, you start looking more for residency and officer wellness physically and psychologically. And one of the multiple benefits of starting to increase the capacity of the agency.
Thank you.
I just want to ask a quick question. How many officers do you have on patrol most nights? And what's the minimum that you've been on patrol?
Total allotment patrol right now, including all supervisors, is 30. But the minimum on graveyard is three officers. At any point, you could only, like on nights, you have the only three officers running around because vacations, they call, training, assignments, whatever. Yeah. So again, part of the long-term would be to up those minimums.
Counselor Klein?
The same topic. I don't, I don't have a question. But I feel like the police, our police officers already do a really great job at what they've had, what they have. I don't believe that we need three additional officers. And by removing this from the budget, we would be able to remove the, our forgone taxes from our proposed budget. Oh, I would, on that note, I would like to make a motion.
Aye.
I move to reduce the police protection line item from $10,388,450 to $10,101,980. and one thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars.
Further discussion? I'll second.
Counselor Klein, could you slide your language over here so I get it right, please?
Thank you.
Been moved by Counselor Klein, second by Counsel President Cleaver, to reduce the police protection line item from ten million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, ten million, one hundred, one thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Make sure Finance Director has everything.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. And with that, Counselor Klein, would you like to speak to your motion?
Like, I kind of, I kind of already spoke on it. You've got to make that somewhere. We've already, we're already dealing with a pretty, a pretty good budget. We just, I know, I don't want to pay more taxes than I have to. So that's, that's where I saw the impact.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel President Cleaver.
I agree. And nor do I want to pay any more taxes than anybody else either.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion? Counselor Wright?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just struggling with this one. It, it's a lot of money. And it, no, it's, it's two things that are really the most, that most important kind of balance with people. You know, why are we paying taxes so we can have essential services? Police services are one of those essential services. But also, how can we be? Where, where's that line of being as responsible as possible with not increasing taxes versus are we, are we not covering one of the most important areas with taxes? So I just wanted to add that I'm, I'm, I'm struggling on this, this one a bit.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess in my opinion, I don't think there's anybody sitting up here on this stage that knows Chief Guzak's business, or the, you know, the police department, how much effort and the work they put into it. I feel we need to trust his opinion on it. If he says he needs them, I believe he needs them.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Schroder?
Also echo that. I believe that he's compassionate about his people, and that creates a good working environment. And he wants to keep them safe as well as everyone else. And so I, I would not approve that.
Mayor.
Counselor Porzeman?
I just echo Counselor Spicklemeyer and Schroder. I've taken several ride-alongs with the police officers and seen their day job during the day and at night, and seeing the stress that it can put on their families as well as their disattaches. And I think if you continue to run on a tight ship, or not a full staff, and you wear them out, we will either have the police officers leave, which we do have problems with, they'll leave to other cities, because we are not providing quality care for their mental health and for them to be able to provide adequate protection. You have to be able to let them have time to be mentally prepared for that. It's a very mentally taxing job, as well as stressful and dangerous. And I think we need to care about our police officers as well as the community. And the way to do that is to make sure our police officers are getting adequate rest. My concern is making them continue to work on with not having adequate staffing, you're going to burn them out. And they're going to be, and then we're going to have even less police officers to be able to protect our city.
Thank you, Counselor. Hey, Counselor, if there's no further discussion, those in favor of the amendment, please vote by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay.
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 Motion fails. Thank you, counsel. Are there any further amendments? Counselors, I'm going to give this a minute or so while you think about your possible amendments. Okay, if there's no further amendments at this time, we will return to the main motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number forty-nine fifty. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 motion against?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Clark Brockie?
Approving the second ordinance, forty, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston to be termed the twenty-two, creating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the city of Lewiston, Idaho, for the fiscal year commencing October one, twenty-twenty-five, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-six, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clark Brockie. Counsel will now move to see ordinance forty-nine fifty-one. Considering fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable property situated within the corporate limits of the city of Lewiston for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty-twenty-five, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-six, for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for certification to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesperstown County in the amount of twenty-five million, four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, providing a certified copy of the twenty-twenty-six annual appropriation ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesperstown County, Idaho, as adopted by the city of Lewiston for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six fiscal year. This is an action item. Counsel? Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve the second reading of ordinance number forty-nine fifty-one.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Wright, to approve the second reading of ordinance number forty-nine fifty-one. Is there discussion or amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Clark Brockie?
Approving the second reading of ordinance forty-nine fifty-one, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limits of the city of Lewiston for the fiscal year commencing October one, twenty-twenty-five, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-six, for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for the tax certification to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesperstown County, Idaho, in the amount of twenty-five million, four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, providing a certified copy of the twenty-twenty-six annual appropriation ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesperstown County, Idaho, as adopted by the city of Lewiston for the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six fiscal year and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clark Brockie. Counselors, next we move to Roman numeral five, unfinished and new business item. May City Council comment? Counselor Porzeman, any comments with us tonight? We'll let you go first.
No, I, I just support, I guess I just support the thought. I didn't say this in the beginning, but I think it'd be good to make sure we don't care to vote it multiple times.
Thank you, Counselor. Other city councilor comments? Doesn't look like any. Okay, we'll move to Mayor comments. And I want to share with the council about a couple of leads that I've received, a couple of businesses that have expressed interest in Lewiston. And these are leads that I've received apart from Valley Vision. And I have asked Jerry Chavez, he's here, to help with those leads. So I can tell you that I've asked him to spend time working on these leads with me. This is outside of his role as Valley Vision Director, but it contributes to economic development in the county, not just, or in the city, the county too. But I just appreciate him being available and Andrea to work on these issues with me because I need the assistance. I just want to thank them for that. That will move to Roman numeral six. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
It's been moved by Counsel President Cleaver, second by Counselor Schroder to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Your turn. Thank you, counsel.